We'll call the meeting to order with a roll call followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mrs. Bennett?
President.
Mrs. Eckerd?
Here.
Mr. Franco?
Here.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Here.
Mr. Widener?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Farr?
Here.
Mrs. Arnold?
Here. All right, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Doherty, do you have some remarks for us this evening?
I do. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much. Welcome to our first school board meeting of the new year. It's very good to see everyone. There are other events occurring right now in our high school, and I want to wish good luck to our swim team that match is probably just finishing up, and our boys' basketball team is probably just about starting, so good luck to those teams in their competitions today. I really enjoy going to our student events. I go to as many as I can. That, to me, is the fun stuff, getting out and supporting our students. I'm sure that those that attend our meetings in person have noticed that we've added some security measures over the last couple months. The enhanced security is due to emails sent by a multitude of people to our board members, to some of our state reps, to the sheriff, to me, and others that state they're not subject to certain Pennsylvania laws and statutes. Quite honestly, that made some email recipients very uncomfortable. We have been and will continue to work with local authorities on this matter. We're also working with the Department of Homeland Security on this matter to help keep our meetings safe and productive. I'd like to talk very briefly about the unscheduled early dismissal we had due to weather on December 22nd. It was obviously less than an ideal situation. As a district, we didn't do a good job getting students onto buses efficiently, and our buses should have been loaded and released and on the road much faster than what had actually occurred. As everybody probably remembers, the timing and the severity of the storm was not expected. It caught us off guard. I made the decision to try to get students home before the roads got worse, and it really didn't work out that way. Many surrounding districts made the same choice, and the roads were not much better at our regular dismissal time. And we had a few bus accidents that day. In fact, we had seven. We initially tried to get administrators to the accident sites, and we did not have any success doing that. Many roads were in poor driving conditions or were completely closed. I was absolutely fit to be tied, as I felt like I was stuck in the administration building because I wanted my staff on site of those accidents more than anybody. You know, hindsight's always 20/20, and I'm a big fan of reflection. I do it all the time. And I'm sure my team and I would reconsider our decisions, or some of our decisions, that day if we could. But being the superintendent, I own the decision. It's mine. And I apologize that our students, families, bus and van drivers, and our contractors were put into a very difficult situation. During that challenging day, here's the positive: Our staff was over the top, was great. Many, many of our employees stuck around to help, and I sincerely appreciate all of our employees, especially those who stayed and helped with the delayed dismissal process that was going on. We even had staff members go home, that live right here in town, go home and come back to the buildings because we were having students brought back to the schools because they couldn't get them home because of the road conditions. And our staff came back and really helped our kids. And I was very proud to say I was a superintendent. I'm always proud to say I'm the superintendent of Toncanic, but you know what? That's special things, and we have special people that work with our kids. And here's what I can tell you: We will be better. We're always going to get better. I'd like to welcome Attorney Sharon Montane with us to our meeting this evening. Attorney Audi was unable to attend, so Sharon stepped right up and is joining us tonight. Welcome. Our next board meeting, which was initially scheduled for Thursday, February 16th, will now be on Wednesday, February 22nd. We'll be advertising that change. This is for a really good reason, though. On Monday, February 13th, our band, our high school band, is going to perform in Magic Kingdom at Disney World. It's so exciting. I'm even planning on sneaking two vacation days in so I could go and cheer on the band. I love to support our students. If you follow me on Instagram, I'll make sure I have lots of pictures out there for it. I know at least one of our board members and lots of parents will also be there to cheer on our students, so do the band trip that week. I made the decision to move our board meeting to the following week. I'll provide a full report next month about the band's Disney experience at the next meeting, and I'm very proud of our talented students and their music teachers, Mr. Lucky, Mr. Krymberg, and Ms. Kasparowski. If you recall, a few months ago, I introduced everyone to our newly acquired therapy dog, Sunny. And her handler was here, intermediate center counselor Kate Crispin. Well, I have big news. Just last week, Sunny passed her final training requirements and will be available in the IC on a daily basis in the very near future. She's also now trained as a reading therapy dog, so she can read with, kids can read to her. I was going to say, she can read to kids. Well, I don't know. She's pretty smart.
She is.
But we're thrilled about that. Also, one other big thing I've been working on with Mr. Bosscher is, I'm sure you see in the paper each week, we have high school students that sign letters of intent to play sports in college. And you see those pictures on a pretty regular basis. We're very proud of our students, and we're very proud of their accomplishments. In speaking with Mr. Bosscher, we decided we're going to have a high school signing day for our seniors that are choosing to enter the military after graduation. We're extremely proud of these students and want to acknowledge their honor and decision to serve our country. We'll take pictures with them and their families, and hopefully Mr. Baker will work with us and get them in the newspaper, but we're going to treat them like a signing day because that's also a huge and important signing day. Finally, just this past week was School Board Appreciation Week, and I'd like to thank our board members for their dedication to the students, families, and community of Toncanic. Being a board member, it isn't easy. Some of the decisions that have to be made and must be made, they're challenging. I can confidently state that this group of nine makes decisions that they feel will make the greatest positive impact on our students. Thank you for the opportunity to serve alongside of you, and again, as always, thank you for the opportunity to address our crowd.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. I'd like to announce that we had an executive session prior to this meeting tonight. The topics were legal matters related to the UHAs versus TASD 2022-19 lawsuit. That is still out there. Collective bargaining agreement with Act 93, and personnel matters related to specific employees. I'd also like to welcome Shawn Williams here tonight. He's the SPL for Troop 518 in Toncanic of the Boy Scouts. He's here tonight to observe our wondrous work here at this public meeting in part of earning his citizenship in the community, right?
Right.
Yeah, merit badge. So, welcome, and we'll try to entertain you to the best of our very ability. With that, we'll be moving to the public comment section. We'll have two public comment periods during tonight's meeting. The public comment on agenda items at the beginning, which is going to be now, and the public comment on non-agenda items or anything else at the end of the meeting. There's a four-minute limit per person per public comment period. When it's your turn to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name, municipality, and which agenda items you're speaking about. All speakers must be residents, taxpayers, students, or staff of the TASD. To object to any action under Title 65, Part 2, Chapter 7, also known as the Sunshine Act, please go to the mic, state your name, as well as the section and subsection of Chapter 7 you believe is being violated. The presiding officer and/or district solicitor will make a determination on the stated objection. That determination is final for tonight's purposes. And with that, we'll open the mic for any public comment on agenda items. Don't everybody come up at one time. Okay.
Hi, my name is Michael Lacy. I'm a resident in Washington Township. And I'm not sure it's on the agenda, but since Mr. Doherty did bring it up about the security, maybe you can have some clarification for me. I wasn't here about two months ago, but my wife was, and with no warning, she was wanded and searched. And Mr. Doherty mentioned various emails, but my wife had overheard some of the security guards saying, "I don't know why we're doing this. That guy who we're supposed to be watching didn't show up." So my question is, who was that guy? What were the security told about that guy? Who gave the order to be watching for that guy, and what did this guy do? And those are the questions. So I don't know if anybody can answer those.
I don't think we can speculate as to what other people were talking about, but we're not.
Well, let me ask you this: Who spoke and gave direction to the security guards that night to do the wanding, and who to watch out for? Who gave them those directions?
You'll have to follow up with that in an email.
Why is that, ma'am?
Because they'll have to figure out what directions you're talking about that you think existed.
Who gave the security guards the directions to wand the people and search the people that evening, and discuss with them about the guy?
If you'd like to send an email, someone will follow up with you.
Somebody here told them that. So I would like to know why I have to send an email when I'm here addressing the public officials?
Because this is not the time to ask questions and get answers. This is public comment on agenda items, so if you have public comment on agenda items...
Mr. Doherty brought up that agenda. I did not.
And you can make your public comment, but it's not question and answer. So if you want to make statements, that's fine, but if you want to follow up...
One thing I want to make clear tonight was, prior, before that meeting, I was approached that I should watch who I was hanging around with and speak to. It could be detrimental. I won't mention the name, but it is a board member. So I think you guys have to watch what you're saying because that could have been a very serious event if I chose to make that a serious event. So as I'm being stonewalled tonight, I don't appreciate that. So I will send the email, and who do I send that to?
Mr. Doherty.
Mr. Doherty, was the board involved at all in making this decision on the wanding and the searches?
I wouldn't say anybody was part, we support the superintendent's decision.
That's a yes or no question, ma'am.
It's not, sir, but if you want to send an email, we can follow up on that.
So in other words, you don't want the public to hear what the answers are? I'll have to send an email and do that. Fair enough. Thank you.
If that's your interpretation, thank you, sir. Any other public comment on agenda items? Okay. Number five, enrollments. They're there for your information on pages seven and eight. Item six, approval of minutes. We have December 8th the reorganization meeting and the public work session and board meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckerd?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Business and finance. Do we have a motion for items one through six?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any objection, or, I'm sorry, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Eckerd?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goebel?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
No.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett? Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. All right, superintendent's report.
Madam President, could I ask that we go into executive briefly?
Yes. We're going to recess for a brief executive session, and we will return.
Okay, at 7:43 the board is returning from executive session. The topic was security emergency matter as well as potential litigation. I believe we had just gotten to the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to recommend a resolution be adopted approving the personnel report as presented. We might want to separate the volunteers on this into a separate vote because of a conflict there, Madam President.
Uh, we can. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve minus the volunteer report.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the personnel report with the exception of the volunteer list. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Golbal?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
No.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Alright, so then we'd be looking for a motion to approve the volunteer list.
Is it the five that are listed here, Quinn, Kurt, Jeffrey, Valerie, and Nicole? Uh, page, uh, I don't know what page it is.
Sixty-five, I think.
Eighteenth?
Nope, that's the minutes.
That's the minutes here in the wrong seat.
That was last month.
Oh, okay, I was trying to figure out why, oh, okay.
Page sixty-five.
Thank you, sorry. We have to, Mr. Burke is on the volunteer list, so he can't.
I was trying to figure out why we were talking, what the problem was. I'm on the wrong page, thank you, sorry.
No problem. Okay, so do we have a motion? I don't know if we got a motion or a second. Okay, motion and a second for the volunteer list to approve it?
Motion.
Okay, then a second.
Okay. Any discussion other than the fact that we have to vote whether or not Mr. Burke should be allowed to volunteer in school?
Sketchy.
Alright, hearing no discussion, can we get a roll call please?
Mrs. Golbal?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd also like to point out, we had an employee, we had approved her retirement months ago, but she retired in November, and I just wanted to congratulate Geraldine Williams on her recent retirement. The next item under superintendent's report is recommended resolution be adopted approving the conference attendance as was listed there, A through E.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
No.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Golbal?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Alright, committee reports. I don't believe we had any committee meetings. Is there anything to report on committees over the holidays? Seeing none, we'll move on to the unfinished business. We have item one, resolution be adopted approving the second reading of the following board policies. They're listed there, A through I.
Some moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Golbal?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Okay, item two, we have a capital projects update.
Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Ethan Fick from Dewey Engineering. He's here joining us tonight. And John Shapolsky, if you would, also come up at the, you know, they've been working very diligently together on the, on the capital plan that this board had previously approved. Just some updates going about it. But first, I just want to talk about the fact that we did have a water heater go here at the high school that had to be addressed. You know, I have zero engineering background, but I came into the room where the water heater was broken, and it was the size of a locomotive. And we fortunately got a new one pretty quickly, and I think I could bear hug it and pick it up. It's fractional compared to it, but John Shapolsky was, was all over that, but thank you very much. I asked Ethan to come by because I know we had a couple outstanding discussions going on. One was about the pool. One was about tennis courts. The third was about penthouses upon the roof, and the fourth was the bid timeline. Let's start with the pool. I think this project may have, or has the potential to get a little bigger from what we initially had thought because of some additional structural issues that may have been found at, on the one wall outside. Ethan, you want to address that, or John?
Thanks for allowing me to be here to explain some of the capital projects that are ongoing, and I appreciate the board's attention in this matter. The first thing is when we did a walkthrough with Mr. Shapolsky, geez, that was several months ago. We were initially just looking at replacing the, the pool heater itself, and we just happened to notice that the block alongside the meratic acid tank was deteriorating, and that the steel column that is in, within the block is, had some severe corrosion. So, just this past week, we did some exploratory excavation along that exterior wall, and we found that the block has really deteriorated approximately two courses, and there's nothing that holds that brick up on that exterior wall as you walk past the pool area. The good news is that the, the brick has maintained its integrity without any support. Normally, you would see like a Christmas tree effect of the block on a forty-five degree angle with, with a failure occurring, so that hasn't taken place. We're coming up with a plan to issue forbidding pretty quickly, and it really just involves replacing the block that is deteriorated with concrete that's formed, rebuilding about two courses of block, and making up the difference with non-shrinked grout. And then the column that is there will be cut off, jacked up to support it, and then we'll replace a column with some steel plates and weld it. So, the repair is not as, as bad as you would think. There's really nothing going on underneath the wall. There's, there's no voids, there's no subsidence or anything. It just happens to be from severe corrosion from the pool chemicals.
Gotcha. So that will be included in the bid package that is done for the pool, correct?
Correct.
Is there any questions about the pool?
Is there a way to protect what, the new work from also having the damage from the chemicals?
So, over the course of time, Phil, the, the chemicals were originally manually put into the pool, so the pool was dosed manually. We've since switched over to an automated system, so it's more contained. There's no spillage back there.
So it's definitely won't be a problem going forward then? Alright, thank you.
And it's an exterior wall or the interior? Where was it again? I'm trying to like quick share my.
So it's the exterior wall, so if you parked on the parking lot out front, and you're looking at the, the large brick two-story wall, it's that wall right there. There's, we removed a section of concrete sidewalk to expose the below courses of that wall. They've been replaced, so it's, you know, safe for students and everybody to walk past.
So how mu, so the estimate we had in there for pool renovations was eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, like approximately, how much more do you think goes into this? I know this isn't a bid situation, but like, how much more we add approximately?
So, we're actually are within budget of that eight seventy-seven. Now that number also included some HVAC portions with improving the ventilation. That'll all go help to prevent this from happening again.
Yeah, thank you.
That's good. That's good. The second item was the tennis courts. I know the board was very concerned with the, with the cost that was projected for the tennis courts. It was approximately five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We had talked about the possibility of doing, or have Ethan take a look at, or Dewey Engineering take a look at it. If there was two of them, you know, essentially it boils down to if you're doing two, it's essentially be approximately half the cost. We are looking, John's been looking into some other, we've been bringing out some, or you have some black topping companies coming out to look at? Will you go to the mic, because Dr. Pabola's on Zoom?
We had the group that did the track, AT&amp;T Sports, they also do tennis court patching and things like that. So, he was out about a week ago and looked at it, and it's, you know, the cracking is pretty severe. So his concern was, first of all, they won't give us a warranty on any patching that we do because of the condition. The base is the issue, and that's why we can't warranty that. But secondly, he's concerned that the cost of patching and repainting, by the time they go through all that, may be very close to basically a mill and, and resurface. So, they're going to give us some pricing, and we'll kind of compare that to what we've gotten from, from Dewey and go from there.
And we are looking.
I just want to have a conversation about that when it comes, just because it's, it's an enormous amount of money, and we have to start thinking about, are we able to fund all these projects in sports going forward? So I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but it's a half a million dollars, and so, you know, that's a two-mill additional money that we don't currently, you know, have. And so I just think we, we need to look at that in terms of, you know, we talked about can we use three courts instead of four, but that may not qualify, you know, so I don't understand the dynamics of what could be played. But I, but I think versus just the assumption is we're going to spend that money. I think we need to really take a hard look at that. It's just, you know, we have a declining enrollment, and we have the same number of sports being played that we did when, you know, there was four thousand people in this, in this district, actually more. I mean, if you look at the number of sports we have today, it's significantly more.
And so we're going to keep examining and trying to find some options that are more cost feasible to present to the board. But I don't want, certainly I don't want the board to think we just put it on the back burner. We're, we're continuing to investigate. We're also looking at other synthetic surfaces that can go on top of that. There's some pretty unique solutions that are out there. We would have to make sure they're actually approved for play, you know, and I know under PIA rules, but there are some options that we are, that we're examining.
Thank you.
Just, just to follow up on that a little bit, I know I tuned in to that particular board meeting where a lot of discussion took place, and there were some, some questions raised about why three of the courts look a certain way, and one of the courts is a little bit newer. It's a little bit of speculation on my part, but it's got some, some thought behind it. Originally, the, the drawings for the design of that tennis court showed two tennis courts plus two additional. But somehow, that you ended up with three and one, from the looks of it, and it looks to me, just being out there surveying, that three courts were built and one was added. The most likely reason for that was all four courts require a conservation district approval, which is a lengthy six-month process because it's over one acre of disturbance. Three courts is under an acre of disturbance, so it was probably convenient to do three courts at the time as part of a project and add the additional court later.
Yeah. I didn't know that. Thank you. The next item I wanted Ethan to be here to talk about a little bit was the penthouses. There was some discussion about potentially including that in some of the HVAC projects that are going to be, units that are going to be put on our roof as part of the work that we're going to be doing. He did, he did send, I don't know if it was you or, or some of your team members that, that were here and, and kind of looked at it. The penthouses would be extremely costly. It would take approximately forty-five hundred square feet of penthouses in total, and just using an estimate of about two hundred and fifty dollars per square foot, it would be approximately a million dollars to add penthouses. Is there anything that I'm not saying that's correct there, Ethan?
No, that's correct.
And that, and that's if, and tell me if I'm wrong, please, that's if structurally the roofs are able to, to handle those.
That's correct. So a lot of those penthouses are located over long-span areas where there isn't support right now, so there's a lot of shoring that has to be done to the structure. The other thing with the penthouses is it's really an addition to the building. So forty-five hundred square foot is, is what we would consider an addition by this term. So, once the penthouse goes on, it needs egress, it needs lighting, it, it's heated, it needs to be insulated for energy code. It's kind of just this waffling effect. It's like a, a pole barn. Once you put up a pole barn, then you decide maybe you need some water in it, then you're heating it, and the next thing you know, you're basically building a separate structure.
Does the board have any questions about that? I mean, if, if the board wants, I, we could still include that as an alternate in the bid package. bid package. I mean, I at that price, I would think we wouldn't want to do that, but certainly, you know, I'm open to suggestions from the board.
I personally don't want.
I'm not. I'm not. That's not fair to the taxpayers. No.
Ethan, the last thing I'd like you to go over for us, if you would please, is just a bid timeline on on where we're at as far as advertising and getting bids out and what we expect the timeline to to kind of be.
So for the two projects, which is the HVAC replacement projects at the high school, middle school, and the high school fire alarm replacement, the documents will be issued January 31st to contractors for bidding. They have approximately four weeks to bid the project. We'll receive the bids and we'll be on the schedule for the March board meeting to present those results to you for your review and approval. After that, we'll we'll begin construction. The the issue with construction right now is HVAC units are are running almost a year in lead time. John Sapolsky and I were just talking about delivery of cars taking over a very long time. It's the same for HVAC rooftop units, so once we get a contractor on board, it's order the hurry up and order the unit and wait.
So when would we be looking at installation? Like, are we looking at summer of '24?
You're most likely looking at summer of 2024 for that work.
Okay. But we would award it potentially in March or April?
Yeah, you almost have to award it for work to begin next year at the supply chain dilemma.
Wow. And what about the pool? What do you envision for the pool bid timeline and?
So the the pool's a little different. We'll be able to get drawings out fairly quickly on that once the structural engineer does some calculations that need to be performed and we'll issue those drawings probably in the next few weeks.
Okay.
And that work can actually take place in the summer. There's nothing that is a long lead item from from procurement standpoint and there's contractors in the area that are adept to performing that work.
Great. Thank you.
Can I can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I I know one of the discussions in the past was a synthetic turf field. I I kind of heard that the the drainage over there in the stadium is not good and it sounds as if that that item would be cost prohibitive, kind of along the lines of what Mr. Burke was saying, you know, we've got to start looking at. But I I don't know if there's any comment available tonight from the engineers about the drainage and the cost if we would even consider a synthetic field down there.
So I I did the cost estimate for the turf field, so you got the right person in front of you to answer questions. So it's a natural turf field now. It has a very significant crest to it. You can probably can't see somebody's shoes on the opposite side of the field because of the the way the field's crested. The thing with the field is with with almost the same thing as the tennis courts, it's over an acre of disturbance and that requires conservation district approval, which means water infiltration becomes a big part of the project. So all of that soil that is out there, topsoil, will be removed. Underground drainage infiltration basin will be put in place. That's fairly significant depth and then that's built up with fines and sand to place the synthetic turf field on top of it. So it just the the site work and the the land development process is is a cost driver for that project.
Yeah, that's that's kind of what I thought. I mean, when I've done research in the past from turf fields and they always hear, you know, 1.2 million, 1.5 million, but with this drainage issue, it's my understanding that would be upwards of maybe 3.5 million or plus that.
That's correct. And then we included some additional costs to replace paving and portions of the track because quite honestly, there's a lot of soil to remove there and it's a lot of triaxial traffic on some access roads that weren't meant for triaxial traffic.
Yeah, and and listen, I I looked at this for years since I've been on the board, but I would agree along the lines of what Mr. Burke said, that just something like that would be cost prohibitive for us, in my opinion, to to even consider that.
Does anyone else have any questions for for Ethan while he's here?
Those were all very good questions.
Thank you, Ethan. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip back.
Hey, under new business, item number one, we have our next presentation of solar opportunities by Ron Timalas and Doug, Doug, representatives from Green Works Development. I don't want to butcher your last name, Doug.
I'm Doug Nydic. I'm with Green Works Development and Ron Timalas also with Green Works is with me this evening.
No, I'm very excited for this. Dr. Supan has been working closely with with Ron and Doug on this. This is a presentation about the potential of the installation of some solar panels on on our properties to help offset the cost of electricity. As we know, we had, you know, electricity discussions that seemed to have gone on for months when we were watching the prices and this option is is a pretty creative way that might be able to offset a significant cost of our electricity and maybe generate some revenue for us additionally. So that might be, you know, we're we're always just looking for innovative ways to to really save some money. So I'm excited to have them here tonight.
Check.
It's great to be here again. I'm Doug Nydic. I'm with Green Works Development. Ron Timalas is also with me from Green Works. Great to be able to start this conversation right after your last conversation about ways to spend money or not to spend money. We're here to talk to you this evening about a program or a solar project that won't cost the district money upfront, the way that we structure these things. We actually set these up as 40-year annuities for the district. These are projects that will reduce your electricity costs significantly. Once you purchase the system at the end of a five-year period, and I'll talk you through the details of how that works, your cost or your cash savings will go up fairly significantly every year. We set it up so it costs you nothing upfront. You basically save and make money every year for a 40-year period on the project while this freezes your electricity cost, in your case, at about half of your current cost for the next 40 years, which is pretty significant stuff. Here we are. Couple of things about the company first before I talk with you about some of the details of some of the projects we've done. We are in Mechanicsburg, which is right outside of Harrisburg. We're a couple of hours from here, two hours from here, but we're the largest commercial solar developer in Pennsylvania. We've done just south of $250 million worth of exactly these projects, these types of projects over the last 12, 13 years. Given that size, we are a very scaled developer. We buy panels, for instance, by the container load from the Pacific Rim, or we use domestic panels as well, depending on how the district wants to structure the project. We buy those things as cost effectively as anyone nationally or internationally could based on the volume that we purchase. We are, though, in Pennsylvania as a Pennsylvania-based developer and energy is regulated in the United States on a state-by-state-by-state basis. It's not a federal regulation. It's state-by-state that it's regulated. We're in Pennsylvania. We understand the regulations in Pennsylvania. We understand the incentives that are available in Pennsylvania. We understand the tax advantages that you can gather from these sorts of projects in Pennsylvania. We know the utilities well in Pennsylvania because we live here and work here. We know the PUC well. We've run into situations in other districts where utilities have tried to do an end run around us and overcharge us significantly for things like interconnection fees. And we know the folks at the PUC that we can call into those situations to be able to bring that cost down to where we kind of knew that it needed to be in the first place. So as a Pennsylvania-based developer, we really feel like we're very, very well qualified to do these sorts of projects for Pennsylvania school districts. These are the sorts of projects that we actively do at this point. This is a project that's a floating solar array in Saraville, New Jersey. You wouldn't want to do or you couldn't financially make this sort of a project attractive in Pennsylvania yet because our incentives for solar aren't strong enough yet and our obviously our cost of electricity isn't quite as high as it is in New Jersey. In New Jersey, the incentives are stronger and the cost of electricity is greater and you can afford to do things like solar floating arrays or solar canopies over parking lots. This is a 4.4 megawatt array on an 11-acre man-made lake in the middle of New Jersey. This thing was bid all over the country about four years ago. We won that bid. We finished the project. It's been very successful. We are, that was the largest floating array in the country when we finished the project a couple of years ago. There's one in California that's larger, but we just finished recently one that's twice this size. It's now the largest floating array in the world. So we bring a lot of technology wherewithal with us when we do projects.
How many how many projects have you done?
Sorry?
How many projects have you done?
We've done about 150 projects to date, again, about $250 million worth of asset value, and I have never had a project underperform out of those 150 projects underperform financially.
Thank you.
And please ask any other questions you've got while I'm walking through this. I just wanted to walk through a couple of district projects, school district projects that we've done over the last couple of years. This is the Tamakwa area school district project. It's a two-and-a-half-megawatt, seven-acre project. It's on an abandoned coal strip mine above the Tamakwa Elementary School. At 10 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt hours worth of electricity cost, their annual savings years one through five is over $230,000 a year. The annual savings after a buyout in year six is over $350,000 a year, almost $15 million over the 40-year life of the array. And we were able to get their average cost of solar-generated electricity down to 3.8 cents per kilowatt hour. The Pottsville area district is similar to Teconic. The Pottsville area district didn't have land available for us to do a ground mount array, so we went with an entirely roof-mounted array for Pottsville, 1.4-megawatt array. They saved over $10 million a year. Their average silk cost of solar-generated electricity was 6.6 cents a kilowatt hour, not as low as the earlier project that I showed you because it's a little it's more expensive to put solar on each individual roof than it is to run one continuous ground mount array. The Midwest School District in Middleburg, about an hour north of Harrisburg, similar to the Tamakwa District, it's a two-and-a-half-megawatt, seven-acre array, similar savings, similar cost of solar-generated electricity.
In the 40 years, what's is there like maintenance costs ongoing or maintenance? You said it's a 40-year life, but in the middle, there's maintenance costs?
There are, and yeah, the question was, are there maintenance costs over the 40-year period? The answer is there are. And when we get to the spreadsheet for your project, then I'll show you the preliminary spreadsheet, I'll show you those operations and maintenance costs.
Sorry.
They're they're a small portion of the annual income.
Okay.
The Central Columbia School District, we've been working on for the last year. We're actually going to do a ribbon cutting on this project. It's in this PPL, which is their local utility, turns the system on for them in the next couple of weeks. We'll invite your administration and all of your board members to that ribbon cutting. If you're interested, you're very welcome to come down and hear about their array and what it's going to do, not only for the district financially, but for the education of their students. They are ready to very actively start to use their array as Midwest has done, as Pottsville's done, as Tamakwa's done, use their array in the classroom, in their science curriculum to educate their students about energy, using the data from the array from their own generating system that we're putting on site. Solar is the solar installations, the fastest-growing vocation in the country, and I think it's going to continue to be the fastest-growing vocation in the country for a number of years. You've got a VOTEC here at Teconic. Putting a solar array up is going to save the district a lot of money. Putting a solar array up is going to very significantly have a ton of educational value for your students as well. In my mind, your students are going to be living in a in an increasingly energy-conscious world. That's the way things are going already. And to the extent that you can educate them about energy while they're still with you here in school, you're going to be giving them a tremendous advantage in their futures, whatever they do. So this is a 3.8-megawatt array. It's a 10-acre array. It's a combined ground and roof mount array in this case. You can see on the lower part of the slide, in the middle, the roof-mounted solar that we're going to do here, that we're we've already done here. You can see the eight acres or so of ground mount solar up on the upper right side of the slide. That combined array is going to save them over $350,000 a year for the first five years, over half a million dollars a year after they buy the system out. With all of these projects, these are projects that really rely on a 30% federal investment tax credit. That's the tax credit that's available for solar projects. You're a not-for-profit as a as a school. You can't take advantage of that 30% federal tax credit, nor can you take advantage of the 85% first-year depreciation on systems like this. What we do in all of these cases, you've got to be able to take advantage of those significant federal benefits, those tax benefits for these projects to get the cost down. What we do in these cases is we bring investors in. We've got a line of investors waiting at the door to invest in these sorts of projects. They put the money up to purchase the project, to install the project. They operate and maintain the project for an initial five-year period, no cost to the district at all, out of pocket to get the project launched. You would sign a 28-year power service agreement. Sharon and I have worked on these sorts of agreements in the past. You'll you'll sign a 28-year power service agreement under which you'll you'll pay a monthly fee for the use of the system, but the way that we structure these projects is you'll get all of the electricity savings on the system and all of the what's called SREC values, the solar renewable energy certificate values. You'll get all of that value from the system day one when the system turns on. So electricity savings in your case, and I'll show you the numbers in a minute, are about nine cents a kilowatt hour. The value of solar renewable energy certificates are about, right now, 4 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt hour. You'll get then 13 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt hours worth of value and that's what your savings are based on. In a situation like Central Columbia's, when we did their analysis, their electricity rate was about six cents, six and 1/2 cents a kilowatt hour. By the time a year and a couple of months later, when we're ready to turn the system on, they've gone from 6 and 1/2 cents to 10 and 1/2 cents a kilowatt hour. That's how much electricity's gone gone up in the last year or two. They are going to save a significant amount of additional cash on their system. From the time that we designed the system and they signed their 28-year contract until a year later, when their system's ready to turn on and do the ribbon cutting, they're going to save about 40% more on their system than they thought they would. And my my guess is that as you go into the future, electricity costs, conventional electricity costs are going to continue to climb and maybe steeply, and they're going to save more money every year as the electricity cost in their utility area continues to go up. So this guy is over $20 million worth of savings over a 40-year life of the system, less than 2 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt hours worth of electricity cost, solar-generated electricity cost. This is, when it turns on in a couple of weeks, going to become the largest K-12 array in the state. That's a 3.8-megawatt system and when I show you your system in a second, right now, we've preliminarily laid out your system at a 5.1-megawatt system. That's larger than the 3.8 by about another 25%. You would be the largest K-12 array in the state then. I throw this in just for grins because everybody likes to talk about it. We just did Troeg's Brewery about a year and a half ago. Troeg's now now brews solar-powered beer. Troeg's saves a lot of money on their solar array, but Troeg's gets a ton of marketing play out of this. Their 25-year-old beer-drinking customer base loves to know that they're drinking solar-powered beer. It's a it's a marketing advantage for them while it's saving them money. It's a, it's a marketing advantage for them while it's saving them money.
What was the two things you said? I understand the savings on the electricity. What was the other one, the something, something credit, solar?
Solar renewable, solar renewable energy certificate is the, so there's a, an alternative energy portfolio standard in Pennsylvania that was established in 2004, and it mandates that utilities in Pennsylvania will either generate their own solar electricity or they'll buy the credits, the certificates, from folks like you, if you tool the system, that will, that do their own solar. Utilities, for different reasons that I will get into now, don't typically generate their own solar-generated electricity, which means that they have to go out and buy certificates from school districts and from homeowners and from hospitals and from businesses like Troeg's Brewery who do generate their own solar. The state mandates that they produce right now a half a percent of their overall generation by solar-generated, by solar generation. That means that that creates value to those certificates, and that's what's created the current 4 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt hour's worth of value with those certificates. So that's, in your case, that's half the cost of your electricity is represented in those certificates. That's taking your income up by 50% more than just the basic electricity cost itself.
And that occurs over the 28-year lifespan?
Well, so that's a, that's a politically-driven number. The question is, does that carry over the whole 28 years? That's a politically-driven number. The demand is created by the state's mandate on that half a percent right now, and it's created, and it's determined by the supply that's provided against that demand. As you tool more solar, if the demand doesn't go up, that would naturally take the value down as you tool more solar projects. I'm in Harrisburg. I went to the PA Chamber Dinner a couple of months ago and listened to now-Governor Shapiro, who was one of the candidates at the time, talking about his platform when he was running for governor. One of the things he talked about was that he's very adamant about trying to get Pennsylvania's overall 8% carve-out for renewables, including the half a percent for this kind of solar. He wants to take that 8% carve-out and push it up, push it up to 30%, which would still not be.
That's Bill, I think.
For Ball to wake up.
Hey, Bill, yeah. Stop like eating a sandwich.
No, I'm, I'm on mute.
Sorry.
So Governor Shapiro spoke really plainly about the fact that he wants to work to push our 8% renewable carve-out to 30%. Other states around us, New York, New Jersey, Maryland, Virginia, DC, all have renewable carve-outs that are between 30 and 100% at this point. We're still at 8%, along with Ohio. Ohio's at about 8% as well. He'd like to get us from 8% up to 30%, which would still trail most of the states around us. And his rationale is that energy infrastructure is as important as transportation infrastructure. If you fall behind in things like renewable infrastructure, you're at a competitive disadvantage trying to bring other companies in from out of state. And so he's going to work hard to push that 8% up to 30%. That, if I followed the guidelines in states like New Jersey, if you push from 8% to 30%, from a half a percent distributed generation solar, which is this kind of solar, up to 2 and 1/2%, which would be about the percentage you'd get to if you went to 8% renewables overall, that would push that $45 per certificate value up to 80 or 100. And that's significant additional income for the, and I can't make any guarantees there, but if that policy goes into place, if you go from half a percent, which was part of the 8% total renewable carve-out, including wind and hydro and those sorts of things, if you go from 8% up to 30, half a percent to 2 and 1/2 for this kind of solar, and you go from 4 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt hour's worth of value there to 8 or 10, now I could do floating solar arrays in Pennsylvania, and you as a district would make a significant amount of additional cash. So we've supplied Paul and your administration with an Excel spreadsheet that I'll show you in a second. That's the Excel copy, and you're welcome to put any values for things like SRECs or, you know, electricity costs into that spreadsheet and see what that does to your cash savings. What we try to do is structure these projects so we make them as owner-friendly as possible, as school district-friendly in your case as possible.
So it's a political number, eight years. Typically, they're in two terms, eight years that could change.
It could, it could, it could go down, and actually, I'll show you in the spreadsheet that I'll, that we'll look at in a minute here. I'll show you in the spreadsheet that we've been very conservative. We've actually gone from, we've started at 40 instead of $45 per certificate. We're, we're being conservative. And then after a couple of years, we drop that to $25 per certificate, and after another couple of years, we drop it down to seven, trying to be as conservative as possible, knowing that it could go down, but it could go up as well. What I'm pretty confident about is that, I don't know what, what's going to happen to SREC values because it's political. I do have a strong feeling that your electricity cost is going to go up significantly. And you're really talking about the, the value of both of those two together.
What is the, the oldest array you've got out there right now?
The oldest array we have out there was built in 2010. We actually started the business in 2010, so the oldest array would be 2011. So we've had arrays in the field now for 12, 13 years. We've put up about 1,400,000 panels over those 13 years. The panels are installed with a 30-year power output warranty. If you don't get 80% of the rated output, initial rated output out of any given panel over a 30-year period, the manufacturer will replace the panel free of cost. We've put up about 1,400,000 panels over the last 13 years. We've had to replace six of those 1,400,000. And those six panels, we replaced because a commercial lawnmower threw a rock bigger than my fist at a panel and broke it, which they're not rated for that. They're rated for hail, they're rated for baseballs, they're not rated for, for rocks bigger than your fist. We had to replace those six panels. The other 1,399,000 whatever are still in place and still operating well. Solar, as a technology, has been around since 1954. That's when the first commercial solar panel was sold. There's a lot of life data on panels because they've been around so long. We show you a 40-year cash flow analysis on systems, knowing that there are solar arrays that have been out there operating and productive for 50 years plus. We use 40 years for all our analyses. The USDA will do solar loans at 30 to 35 years, knowing that the expected life of these systems is more like 40-plus.
So where does the 28 number come from? So like the 28-year agreement, what is the catalyst for that?
It's the way we've structured it. Our partners are all CPAs. They've done a lot of, and we have a fairly unique approach to, Sharon and I have been through this ad nauseam over the last couple of years on other subjects or for other districts. We have taken a unique approach, given that the company is basically based around CPA-driven solar analysis. I'm the engineer here. I do a lot of talks around energy from an engineering standpoint all around the Mid-Atlantic. Part of my sermon on energy, when I talk about it, is that solar's really not a technology business. The technology's been around since 1954, and it really hasn't fundamentally changed all that much since then. It's gotten a ton cheaper, but it's still the same basic semiconductor technology. Solar really is a tax accounting and finance business. So we've got partners who are CPAs who have crafted what I feel is the most customer-friendly approach to these sorts of projects that we can possibly do. A 28-year agreement is an agreement that's got enough life in it that it makes sense. It's not the full 40 years. It wouldn't make sense to do the full 40. It's an agreement that, it's for a long enough time period that the whole agreement makes sense from a structural standpoint. But we encourage you and every other nonprofit that we do work with, and 80% of our work has been with nonprofits, 80% of that $250 million has been for nonprofits. We encourage you to buy the system as soon as you can, and that's five years plus a day. The investors, when they, when they invest in the system upfront for you, the reason why you don't have to put money in is because the investors do that. When they invest in these systems, the IRS, the Treasury rules are that they have to hold the systems for a five-year minimum period. If they don't hold for five years minimum, they forfeit that 30% federal tax credit back to the Treasury, and they can't do that. They blow the project finances, so they have to hold for five years. We'll work with you when it gets close to that five-year point to help you finance the system as logically as you can. Buy it out. It's a truism that whether it's for your home, or whether it's for your business, or whether it's for your school, the way that you make and save the most money on solar is you put it up as efficiently as possible, and we can do that because we're the largest commercial developer in Pennsylvania, and then you own it yourself as quickly as you can. So you put it up as efficiently as possible, and then you own the thing as quickly as you can. If you want to do solar on the roof of your house, I've got solar on the roof of my house. I sold in with a lot of folks like yourselves who are involved in their school's project or their hospital's project or their business's project, and they call me to say, I want to do solar on my house. Do you do residential? No, we don't do residential, but I'll work with you on that to help you find the right way to tool your own residential system. My advice is always, buy it yourself, take the home equity loan out, use the loan, use the, use your electricity savings to pay for the payments on your home system, but own it yourself as soon as you can.
What happens at 28 years and one day?
28 years and one day, in our case, you would get the system. But we encourage, that's if you did the lease. Basically, it's a lease that you can buy out, that we encourage you to buy out of it, five years plus a day. If you were to stay in the lease for the entire 28 years, and again, Sharon and I have been through all these numbers, if you stay in the lease for the entire 28 years, the system's yours. Other questions there?
What's the inherent interest rate in the lease?
I'm sorry?
What's the embedded interest rate in the lease? What's the embedded interest rate that's being charged in the lease?
Uh, the embedded interest rate on the lease, that's a great question. I'm going to get back to you on that answer. I don't like to answer questions like that if I don't know. I've never really thought about what the interest rate is on the lease directly. The investors in our projects honestly make an 8% return on their investment, which is better than market rates, but it's not a double-digit return. It's a reasonable return, and that's how we incentivize them into these projects. I've never looked at it as a net interest rate on the lease, and I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
This is the reason why you want to go solar. You're in Pennalec territory. Pennalec has their price to compare, which is their commercial default electricity price, has gone up 117% in the last 24 months. These sorts of energy inflation numbers stagger the imagination. Ron and I are in the Harrisburg area. We're in PPL territory. PPL's costs have gone up 142% in the last 26 months. It's been unbelievable, and I don't believe, because of global issues, that those cost increases are stopping yet. So in PPL territory, we're, we're going to show you your analysis at about nine cents per kilowatt hour that you're at right now, and we'll show you that going up a little bit per year. We're already in PPL territory at 14, almost 15 cents a kilowatt hour. And I think the rest of Pennsylvania is going to catch up to that kind of pricing. In New Jersey, you're at about 15 cents a kilowatt hour. In Maryland, you're about 15 cents. We've been at five, six cents a kilowatt hour for the last five or six years prior to this cost going up because we were fracking gas in Pennsylvania, and there was no way to liquefy that gas and ship it to Europe or somewhere else where it's a lot more valuable. As of a couple of years ago, you can ship that liquefied natural gas anywhere in the world that you choose to, and we do. That means we're now on a global market where for the last, since the Marcellus shale, the advent of Marcellus shale, we've been using all that gas here, and it's been overabundant and cheap. And 55% going on, probably 80% of Pennsylvania's electricity is generated by burning gas. We are now in a global market, and we've got things like the unfortunate Ukraine situation that are driving energy prices across the globe, and Pennsylvania's energy-insulated bubble, because frack gas couldn't be exported, has burst, which means we're now in a global energy market, which is doing that. And that's what's going on at Pennalec, that's what's going on in PPL and in MedEd and Allegheny and all the other utilities in Pennsylvania. And I don't think that trend is going to reverse. I really don't. So if you're at, well, if you're at nine cents, nine and 1/2 cents in the district now, I'll show you the analysis in a second, your commercial default price is already at 11 cents, and it's going to continue, I think, to increase. Your nine and 1/2 cents is going to turn into 11, 12, 13, 14 cents, maybe in a couple of months, who knows? That's the way it's been working. When you tool your own solar array, once you purchase the array after that five-year period and you lock in your interest rate, we can, we can help you with 30, you can do your own bond financing, or we can help you with a USDA solar loan. The United States Department of Agriculture has loans specifically tailored for school districts and other nonprofits to purchase these systems after five years. We can help you get long-term fixed low-interest financing, or we, or you can do your own bond financing. Once you do that and lock in that interest rate, you know what your electricity cost is going to be for the next 35 years. And if you could take any one of your other major costs as a school board and fix it at about half of what it currently is and let it sit there for the next 40 years, you would do that in a minute.
Can you explain to me what the buyout figure is after five years? What's the, the figure to buy the, the system after five years?
Yep. In five years, the figure to buy the system out, I'll show you that on the spreadsheet in a couple of minutes. It's at the bottom of the principal column on the spreadsheet that I've already given out, that 11 and 1/2, 11 by 17 page that I, that I handed out. At the bottom of your principal column, about midway across the page, the bottom of that principal column is your buyout amount. And the principal and interest calculation on that loan, with some assumptions there, is shown under principal and interest in that middle, those middle two columns.
Okay.
Let's look at your layout. What we did was we worked with your administration over the last several months to work out a preliminary layout and preliminary analysis. The way these projects work is that we get as much information as we can upfront. We get utility bill information, we get your site information, we get your roof ages, we get your supply, electricity supply contract information, and we build a preliminary analysis from there. Once we've built that preliminary analysis, we get that to your administration, we see if that preliminary analysis is the direction that they wanted us to go. We've gotten through that step of the, of the game here, of the process, to show that to you. This is the initial recommendation. This is not by any stretch a mandate, something that can't be changed. This is part of the exercise now for you as a board to look at, to decide where we've located these arrays. Is it where you want to see them? Do you feel you'd like to move things from here to there? Would you like to eliminate a section? Would you like to add a section over here? Would you like to do more ground instead of roof? Would you like to not do solar on a roof in particular because of some other reason? All those things are all, and Sharon and I have been through that big time, all those things are this step of the process. So this is not locked in, this is the recommendation stuff. So we're showing at Tucanuck High School about a 1.7-megawatt roof array. We filled the roof of the high school with solar, as you can see in that layout. 0.4 megawatts, about a half of, 0.4 megawatts, a little, little under a half a megawatt is on the ground, in a location that your administration felt was at least worth exploring, but that's all part of the decision-making process here. I personally like seeing, if you can, if you have the ground to do it, I like seeing some of any array on the ground, if that's possible. When you put solar on the roof, it's going to save you financially, but your students and your community can't see it. I personally like to see some of the array on the ground because it's visible. In Midwest School District's case, down in Middleburg, that I showed you a couple of minutes ago, every May, they do what's called Sunday, where they take all of their students outside, near the array, and they do all kinds of solar science experiments out there next to the array, and they call that Sunday. And they've made kind of a big deal about that every year, and they get press coverage on it, the whole nine yards. That's the kind of educational value that I really think needs to be at least visible in a couple of locations, if you can afford to do that. So there's the high school layout. The intermediate center is down below. We've filled as much of that roof as possible. The upper left-hand slide shows the primary center. That's a little over a half a megawatt. In that case, you've got a roof that's significantly aged, and so we've worked with John on the details of that roof, and I'll show you in a minute, that in your analysis, in the numbers that I'll show you in a second, we've actually given you a million-dollar allowance. We'll put a million dollars of roof upgrade cost into the project. That won't cost you anything. We'll build that million in, get that, get that primary roof up to speed, get it resurfaced, and we'll have to work with your roofing contractor in order to figure out exactly the cost of that. But for now, we've bookmarked a million-dollar allowance for roof upgrade before we would put the solar on that roof. If a roof is 10 years old or newer, I'll put solar up, knowing that it's a newer roof. If a roof is 30 years old or 25 years old or older... If a roof is 30 years old or 25 years old or older, we recommend that you replace the roof or reskin the roof before we put the solar up there, because the last thing I want to do is put solar up and, you know, two or three years later, have you moved the solar in order to replace the roof. So in the, in the other roof cases, your roofs were new enough that we feel good about putting the solar up there. In this case, we want to see you upgrade the roof before you would do that, or drop that piece of the array out entirely. Actually, when we did this layout the first time, we were showing, I think it was 78% of your overall electricity offset, and we didn't use that primary center roof, nor did we use the Mahupeney ground that I'll show you in a second. We showed that to your administration, they came back and said they'd like to push that offset up to a higher number. We went to the primary roof and left the allowance in there, and we put solar on the ground at Mahupeney to get your numbers up closer to 100% offset.
We've had some discussion regarding putting HVAC units, new HVAC units on the roof, how would that affect this?
If you're going to do, if you're going to do anything like putting HVAC units on the roof or doing anything else that would affect the roof, that's the next stage of conversation, is to talk about where you're going to put them, what you're going to put up there, how tall they're going to be, and we'll factor all that into the final analysis and fine-tune it before we move forward. And what we'll do is we'll get to a final analysis on everything, including those sorts of future events, and make sure that everyone's approved and bought in on that before we proceed.
Thank you.
Can you talk for a moment about how the arrays sit on the roof? Are they attached to the roof? Structurally, how do we know the roof can, can handle that? I mean, because they're the kind of questions that immediately come to my mind.
Absolutely, great questions. So the question is, you know, what do we do to analyze the roof and the roof structure first, and how do the, how do the solar panels sit on the roof? If you decide to move forward and we get a contract signed, the first thing that we'll do is bring a structural engineer up. We'll bring our electrical engineers up to look at your electrical rooms and to look at your roofs and to make sure that they understand all the details about the arrays that they're going to put on, in place. We'll also bring a structural engineer up who will look at the structure of each of your roofs and each of your buildings, and make sure that the structural engineer certifies that each of your roofs is able to hold the solar that we're going to put up there. Solar, the way that we do it, really only weighs about five pounds maximum per square foot, it's not a lot of weight on the roof, but it's rated for 120 mile-an-hour winds, and so it'll take any storm that's going to hit it up this way, you wouldn't want to put that in the Caribbean, but you can here. We will, when we put the solar on your roof, set the solar on the roof, it's not screwed down to the roof, it's what's called a floating ballasted system, it basically just sits on the roof. It's a, it's a fairly, it's a really fairly elegantly designed racking system where a tray will sit on the roof, it'll hold both panels at a 10-degree angle on the roof. We'll put a couple of cast concrete blocks, it's clumsy, but it works, cast concrete blocks on each one of those racks to hold it down. That's about five pounds per square foot across the roof, not a lot of weight on the roof. You really worry more about the wind blowing panels off the roof than you worry about the weight of the panels collapsing the roof. So it doesn't penetrate the roof at all, used to, 10 years ago, it used to screw down to the roof at every leg of the array, and that caused all kinds of roof leaking issues. This is a less expensive way to do the job and it doesn't penetrate the roof, which is huge. So these things just sit up there, we actually take a piece of roofing material and sit it under each tray, so that if the wind blows and it, you know, kind of vibrates those racks a little bit, it doesn't abrade the roofing material itself. There'll be a 40-millimeter-thick piece of EPDM or roofing material under each one of the racks. The advantage is, it's not a lot of weight, it doesn't penetrate the roof, and when you put solar on all of your roofs, like we're showing you here, that's absorbing a lot of the energy, obviously, that's what solar panels do, they absorb energy. That's absorbing a lot of the energy that would hit the roof if those panels weren't there, it's going to make your roof last longer, which is kind of an interesting bit if you think about it.
How do you handle snow?
That was my, that was my next question, what about snow?
Snow.
So these panels are designed to absorb energy. You never have to clean them, when you get the big snowfall, as soon as a corner of the panel starts to see sunshine, which it will fairly shortly on, these things are at a 10-degree angle, so snow and rain will slide off, soon as a corner of the panel starts to see sun, it starts to absorb that energy, it starts to warm the panel up. The panels are all black, sitting up on the roof, they're designed to absorb energy. It melts the snow, the snow slides down off of them, and you'll be back up on your feet in a fairly short period of time. If you, I don't know if it's ever going to snow in this area again, it doesn't seem like it's going to, but if you get the three-foot snows that we've had in the past, and it covers your entire roof and covers the entire array, it may cost you electrical generation for a couple of days until that snow melts. But as soon as the snow starts to melt, as soon as those panels start to see a little bit of sunshine, it's actually going to help you melt the snow that's on your roof, because it's going to warm the panels, melt the snow, get all that water down the drain, and it'll be back up on its feet and generating again after the snow melts. We set these systems up so that they will generate whatever offset we're predicting, and I'll show you that in a second, whatever offset you're, we're predicting over the annual use, the electricity use that you're seeing over the course of a year. These systems are not designed to generate instantaneously what you would use at any given minute, because you're not going to be able to generate solar at night, right? You're not going to have solar-generated electricity that's instantaneously powering this board meeting, it's not generating any solar out there if you had it. These things generate enough electricity over the course of the year, and it's more in June, July, August than it is in December, January, February, but over the course of the year, they'll generate the offset that we're predicting against your annual load. Pennsylvania is what's called a net metering state, which means that you can buy and sell electricity across the bidirectional meter that we'll install at the same retail cost. So when you're generating in the middle of July, let's say for a school district, school's not in, you're not using the electricity that you would if school were in, but you're generating a lot of electricity because it's July or August, you're going to push your meter backwards, it's actually going to give you full retail value credit for the electricity you're generating in June or July. You'll be able to use those credits then, at night or in the winter, when you're using more electricity but not generating as much. That's called net metering. The grid effectively, when you think about it then, is your battery, right? When you're generating and not using, you're pushing it off to your, to the grid, which is your battery, and then when you need that electricity, you're bringing it back from your battery, back from the grid to use it. And you buy and sell across your meter at full retail value. That's big.
The ground ones are on the ground, or like you maintain, you mow underneath them?
Right, so the, so the ground arrays, I'm showing you the primary center ground array there, it's 1.3 megawatts, that'd be about, eh, three and a half acres in that, in that case, that's about a three-and-a-half acre array. We fence all of our ground arrays, you'll get to decide what kind of fencing you want us to put up. We can do chain link fence, we can do that in, you know, metal color, chrome color, or black, or green, or other colors. You could do a wooden post and five-wire fence, we've done some of those, those are a little more aesthetically pleasing, pleasing. You know, you can pick your fencing materials, but we completely fence all of our array areas. You can do a number of things to manage the, we put a slow-growing turf grass under our arrays, so you really only, if you were mowing it, you only need to mow it two or three times per season. In Midwest's case in Middleburg, they have fenced arrays there, they've brought in sheep, and they're now grazing sheep, they're using their Future Farmers of America students to manage the herd of sheep that are in their fenced solar array. Sheep actually really like hanging out under these things, I've spent a lot of time with sheep under solar arrays. When you see the sheep in the fenced area, unless they've got to go somewhere else, they're hanging out under the panels. Because it's, they're bifacial panels, they transmit filtered sunlight, if you're a sheep, it is the place where you want to spend your time, not out in the sun. I'm doing a lot of work with grazers, you know, who are using solar in their grazing operations in general, because those two are very compatible with each other. So you can mow these, mow these arrays yourselves if you'd want to do that. I've got other schools that are looking at robotic mowers to do that, they're going to let some of their STEM groups do the robotic mowers. Or you can put sheep in there, you don't want to put goats in there, because goats jump up on the array and chew things, so that doesn't work, but you can do a lot of interesting things with those ground下的 arrays.
I, I think there's going to be a lot of more discussion and questions and things, this might need to get moved to a Buildings and Grounds, unless we want to be here till 10:30, 11 o'clock tonight.
I don't even know what to ask, to be honest with you.
Right. It's a lot of information to take in.
I just mean, like, I'm an electrical engineer by background, and so, but I mean, I don't understand energy credits, like, we need to do a ton of work to figure out and understand everything you just said in terms of, what are the risks, what are the pitfalls, what's the contract look like, what are the true energy savings, the what-if scenarios if energy goes up, down, I mean, you have all that stuff, but like, I don't, I don't have the spreadsheet, I have it here, but I want to play with, what if the energy costs go up or down? And so, like, we just, we have a lot of work to do, like, this is, this is a humongous undertaking, and so I really appreciate you bringing it to the board, because, you know, if we can find a way to save a ton of money, it's, it's a win-win for us. You know, I just want to understand, who are, who are the other investors on the other side, how do they get paid? What, you know, like Phil said, if interest rates go up or down, what happens after five years? I mean, I could rattle off, we just have a lot of work to do with this.
Absolutely.
So it's a great.
We're willing to come back up whenever you need us to.
It's a great introduction, and so, we might want to do is, is, you know, we got to kind of absorb some of this, and then, you know, you guys are a ways away, and so, like, I'm really comfortable with Zoom calls and Teams calls and all that sort of stuff, that'll give us a chance to kind of say, okay, what do we do next with this? Because I just, I'm not prepared, I'm not prepared on even what, what to do with it.
Absolutely understand.
I completely understand, because you have a much better background than I do, and the first time we started talking about this, it, it blows you away. It's like trying to get a handle on.
I get the concept of it, but like, you know, I want to know what could go wrong, and so, I, I don't even know what, I don't know what questions even ask of what could go wrong.
Yep. I'm going to summarize really quickly by saying, in your case, given what I just showed you in your layouts, this offset's 98% of your use, it's got a million-dollar roof replacement in it, like I talked to you about earlier. We're using 9.4 cents per kilowatt hours worth of electricity cost that you're, that's off of your electricity bills. That, that would result in $160,000 a year's worth of savings for the first five years, over 3.70 a year, for the next 35 years, over 17.5 million dollars worth of savings. No upfront investment, we're going to be able to get you down to five cents per kilowatt hour, fixed for 40 years. That's really where the rubber meets the road right there, that's the financial summary. And there's the analysis, the 40-year cash flow analysis that we've got in front of you, there's a lot of conversation that needs to happen there in order to really get it all to you and let you understand that, and you're really willing to come up anytime you need us to to talk through that.
If, if the decision was made to move forward, and we're, you know, we're quite a distance away from that decision, how long does it take from the time that would be said yes, until the time you have an array up and running?
We are, for any system this size, it would be about a six-month approval period to get the approvals through the utility, and then it takes about six months to get the arrays constructed. So about a year from the time you'd sign the contract until the time we turn the system on. In Central Columbia's case, we're going to do a ribbon cutting here in about two weeks. We started last November, we actually finished the array in November of last year, and we're waiting for the utility to flip the switch.
Gotcha. And can, can Pennalec handle the power that this could potentially generate back to their grid?
Yes, yeah, and we'll confirm all of that. We, we don't do all of that detailed analysis until we sign a contract, but those are all the things that we jump into immediately. We do what's called an interconnection application. As soon as you sign the contract, one of the first things that will happen is we'll put an interconnection application in with Pennalec, and we'll work with them, we'll put an allowance in for what we think the interconnection costs to their grid are going to be for you, and then we'll work with them to finalize all that and come back to you with any updates if we need to do that.
Very good.
And it is all turnkey. Once you sign an agreement, we may ask you to go along to a township meeting or to get us some other information that we'd need, but everything else that needs to happen, everything else, including permits and approvals and the whole nine yards, we take care of all of that.
Thank you. You know, I thought it was important to have, you know, these guys come and talk to the board, because really the direction I'm looking for is, yes, we want to move forward with more information, or, or no, we didn't. You know, just in, in looking at the data from other school districts, I mean, I think it's, you know, I think we should look at it.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's anybody saying that we don't want any more information on it, or don't want to continue investigating. What's, I'm sorry, what's the oldest school district you did? Like, what school district is the one that's been running the longest from your projects?
Tamakwa and Midwest are the ones that have been running the longest, they both turned on, actually Commonwealth, if you want to be a little more liberal in your definition, Commonwealth Charter Academy is a cyber charter school. We did their Harrisburg location about three years ago, three and a half years ago. Tamakwa and Midwest are both November of 2020, so about two years and three or four months.
I noticed you did all locations except, we have some acreage in Washington Township, class from Washington Park.
The one at Washington Park, which was not within our two-mile.
Right, there's, there's all kind of other nuance here. If you had land, if the district owned land, or leased land under a long-term lease that was within two miles as the crow flies of one of your meters, we could do what's called virtual net metering and connect that array to one of your meters virtually. Those are all the things that we can fine-tune about this as you look at it. If you recognize that there's other opportunity, we'll work back and forth with you on those sorts of things and make this whole project as efficient and as cash-effective for you as we can. It, it really is an iterative process over the next month or two or so, until we get down to a final layout, or 12 months, until we get down to a final layout that everyone feels very comfortable with.
Thank you very much, we'll be, we'll be in touch.
Absolutely, appreciate your time.
All right, we are moving on under new business, to item number two, which is the first reading and retirement of the following board policies. And you see there's plenty there, A through UU. And again, these are just the first readings, so there is no vote or anything necessary, the board and the public, everybody has another month to read through these and pick them apart, and then we will take a vote or even more discussion at the next meeting. Does anybody have any discussion on these now?
Madam President, I would just like to point out that this is the 200s that PSBA recommended that we updated, there's no change to anything that we're currently doing, no procedural change for anything we're currently doing, and again, these are, are mostly just legal updates, legal language updates.
Okay, seeing none, Mr. Doherty has an academic calendar update for us?
Thank you. As you know, I mentioned it in my talk, we had the day, we had that severe storm on December 22nd, December 30, 23rd, we had a snow day, not a virtual instruction day, we had, we had good old-fashioned snow day that day. So that causes us to add a snow, add a day back into the calendar. We are going to add back in at the end of the year, so it'll be on, the last day of school will now be Thursday, June 1st, it'll be a half-day, just like the day was that we had lost on December 23rd, and that gets us closer to that weekend, because I know that, you know, preferably we want graduation on that Friday, June 2nd. So that's snow makeup day, and our calendar does not need to be modified, that was already listed as a snow day in our calendar.
Any other discussion about that? Okay, item number four, update on write-to-know requests.
Thank you. As of early this morning, it might have changed a little bit later in the day, but as of the midday today, we had 25 write-to-know requests received so far for this school year, 10 additional write-to-know requests were received since the last board meeting, 23 have been fulfilled or partially denied, two write-to-know requests are yet to be fulfilled. There are now two outstanding appeals with the Office of Open Records, and so far this year, we've spent $2,254 on our attorney's fees to look at those write-to-knows.
Right, and that is not inclusive, as you said, it's just attorney's fees, it's not inclusive of the time that we're paying salaried staff to work on these.
That's correct.
Okay, item five, or is there any other discussion on the write-to-knows? Okay, item five, the Visa account is there for your information. Item six as well, the Kelly Services substitute teacher fill rate. Item seven, approval of student overnight field trips as listed, Skills USA State Conference in Hershey and Skills USA National Conference in Atlanta. I'm guessing that's Georgia.
Yes, it is Georgia, it's not Atlanta, Pennsylvania, yes.
Motion to approve. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblum?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item eight, approval of a memorandum of agreement by and between TASD and TIAA related to the CBA and the extracurricular schedule and compensation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bennett? Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblum?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
No.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item nine, approval of an affiliation agreement with the New Col-, with the College of New Jersey School of Nursing and Health Sciences and the Toncanic Area School District.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblum?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Number 10, the approval of less than banned contracts as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblum?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Item 11, approval of a letter of authorization allowing Greg Ellsworth to accept and transfer all required documentation needed to register a donated vehicle from the Wyoming County District Attorney's Office at TASD.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Goldblum?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Far-, Franco?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
All right. Item 12, we'll have the completion by the Toncanic School Board members of the Luzern Intermediate Unit 18 election ballots. Lori, any suggestions here?
No, I worked with every single one of them for several years, and I highly recommend each one of them.
Do we have a motion? Lori made a recommendation, but do we have a motion?
Do we do it individually or as a board?
Everybody does them individually.
Oh, okay. Everybody do them individually then.
And then hand over to Carolyn?
Yes. And then they'll be submitted to the IELTS.
Yep. Yeah, check the box, yeah.
So check the boxes, sign your name, create your name, all that. Okay. Item 13, motion authorizing, authorizing the adoption by the Board of School Directors of Toncanic Area School District of a resolution authorizing the issuance of a general obligation note for the purposes of funding a project consisting of, among other things, one, the design, acquisition, construction, installation, furnishing, and equipping of alterations, renovations, additions, and, losing the line I'm on, improvements to existing facilities of the school district, including but not limited to ventilation and HVAC improvements, and replacements and improvements, and renovations to certain of the school district's athletics, athletic facilities, the purchase of capital equipment for use in or in connection with the facilities of the, of the school district, and three, paying the costs and expenses of issuance of the note, all as more fully described in the complete text of the resolution on pages 87 through 111.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
Nope, we have a second. Any discussion?
This is for 3.25 million dollars?
3.25. This is.
With Truist Bank?
I'm sorry?
With Truist Bank, a 10-year amortization, correct?
Correct. If, if we have specific, yeah, that, you're, you're absolutely correct. We do have Brian Kassalansky and Ryan Hottenstein, and they are here if you have questions regarding this. But yes, that's exactly what it is. And this is for the capital projects that we're going to be doing.
Do we take all this money upfront, or do we take it out as we need it?
I believe we take it all upfront.
Okay.
Somebody else asked a question because they've been here since 7 o'clock, and they, they want to make sure that it was worth it when they write their bills, billing statement.
I still have things to decide.
Oh, okay, okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
No.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblum?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
The capital projects we would talk about doing were in a roughly $6 million range. We had about $3 million left from previous note, and this to make up the total.
Correct.
Yeah.
Item 14, motion to approve a lease contract with Top Business Solutions for copier hardware and maintenance. The contract term is 60 months with a monthly cost of $2,195.92. Additionally, black and white copies are billed at .46 cents, and color copies are billed at 3.4 cents. There will be a one-time lease filing fee of $99 that will appear on the first invoice. Final approval subject to solicitor's review and approval. Pages 112 through 118.
I just want to say that this, that I have reviewed that, so, and it's been approved by me.
This is for multiple copies, I believe?
We did it a few months ago. Dr. Supan, I know he wanted to be here tonight, but it's.
Uh, Dr. Supan, if you're watching, I feel like there was a lot of things that were on your plate tonight that you stayed home for, so, just saying.
He's, he's sick.
I know, I know.
But he spent a long, a great deal of time, as did Mr. Cormus and Mr. Simko, working on this, meeting with multiple companies. We anticipate that, and they've vetted a lot, and we anticipate that we're actually going to end up saving about $500 monthly with the addition of all-new machines, which is pretty significant.
I counted 19 machines?
19 machines.
And they're in the back.
And some of them are old, beyond their useful life. You could ask Carolyn about, Carolyn about that. She clears the, the amount of jams she clears. But this is, we expect that this is going to provide us savings and give us new equipment.
So we're not adding new machines?
Now, there are some, we are adding some where we had printers previously, but the cost of printers is significantly more than a copier per page. And we're also using some software called Paper Cut Software, which is going to reroute automatically to copiers if there's a lot of volume that are going directly to printers. And this is going to allow us then, so, you know, some people, and rightly so, like for special ed, if you had a special education teacher didn't want to print an IEP and have a print to a copier, and then you'd be concerned with confidentiality reasons that, you know, other people are going to have access to it. Well, you could send something to the copier. When you go to the copier, you put in a code, and any, you could go to any copier, and any job you have waiting to print would then print while you're right at it.
They're setting that up for us, not right?
Yes. And Phil McCarthy is here from Top Business Solutions, and I'm sure I gave you the very generic version of what these machines can do, but, you know, it's, we need new machines in our buildings for our staff.
It just says 60-month lease. Now, does that mean we return these machines after the 60 months?
Yes, Phil.
Step right up, sir.
Trying to decipher this a little bit.
It's like a car. You just can't let the kids color all over it or drink McDonald's cups on top of it.
Good evening.
Howdy.
So the, the 60-month lease, it's a fair market value lease. At the end of the time, at the end of the term, you have options. You could continue month to month with that equipment for as long as you want. You could purchase the equipment for the fair market value, or you could trade that equipment in, get new equipment on a new lease. So you have options.
It depends on during the 60 months, how much time you've come up and had to make repairs and stuff.
There's service and maintenance agree, included with this agreement, so my colleagues will be taking care of the equipment during the term. At the end of the lease, the leasing company determines the value, and they'll say, for this machine, it's X month, X, X much, or this machine is this much. They determine that, and they do that at 60 months.
Saying like the value of a car after a certain length of time is.
Yeah. There's a favorable amount. You know, at the end of the 60-month lease, I have a lot of clients that say that's all it costs to buy this equipment, because you can theoretically continue to use it for several, several years.
Any other questions or discussion?
I have questions, but it's basically for administration.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the teachers or the pairs are, do not use the copiers. If they need to run and quick, run like 10 or 15 pages off, because everything should go to a central copying station.
We do have a central copying location. It's here at the high school for like volume jobs. So like if I taught, you know, if I was a math teacher and I needed 150 copies of a test, I wouldn't, I want to send that to central copy. But if I needed to make like 10 copies for something, I would just use the copier that's there in my building.
Okay. Just for everybody's information, we lost internet, so we are no longer streaming.
Yep. This is my big debut.
I know. You're all this way. It's like 2 o'clock in the morning, I'm not even sure.
No more questions.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other board discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, please.
We didn't get any motions yet.
Anybody got a motion?
Motion to approve.
We got two motions. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Widener?
To save us money, yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
No.
Mrs. Eckard?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldblum?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
We lost internet.
Oh, okay. Mr. Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
All right. Item 15, the 2023 School Board Committees, page 119. I don't have anything there to change, so this kind of came up towards the last minute that we realized we didn't do it before, and I didn't have any reason to change anybody, so everybody's okay with it. I don't think we have to vote on that. It's just a FYI, same as last year. And with that, we'll open the floor back up to any additional public comments on board agenda items or non-agenda items.
Mr. Doherty, do you want to say anything about the, the session next Tuesday?
We've got a, we've got a.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Once again, Michael Lacy, I want to really commend Mr. Burke and Ms. Bennett because they seem to be the only ones on the board here that's concerned about the citizens' pocketbook. And I really appreciate it. You get, you mentioned it a couple times, and I want to make everybody aware, there's a poll done recently that showed that people making $50,000 a year or less, and I think that's a lot of people here in Toncanic. I think that fills a lot, with the huge amount of inflation, that, that their bills are now exceeding the money they bring home. And yet this board only seems to want to find ways to spend money. You raised the taxes last year. I'm going to guess it's $3 million plus that you're borrowing. You're going to raise taxes again. And I think that's immoral, that you're expecting these people to take on your pet projects. And I think you really need to look deep into your heart and say, you know what, maybe I have to start looking at these poor people struggling every day to make ends meet. I don't see that here, and actually, I'm disgusted by it. Secondly, I'm also disgusted by the fact, may I ask a question? Is there anyone here that is not, that is a citizen here for me? You want to know why I'm the only citizen? There was another one. She was forced to go to the back and get wanted, and they wanted to search as well. She refused to do that. Mr. Doherty, is that the type of culture you want here in Toncanic Area School District? That you're intimidating people? And look, I'm the only citizen. Why is that?
I can't speak to that.
Well, no, and you won't. So I think you all need to take a great look and say, this community deserves better. It deserves better behavior. It deserves the fact that you, you don't care about these struggling people who probably are killing themselves right now at Procter &amp; Gamble, working all, all kinds of shifts, not making that 50,000 or barely. And yet, all you say is, $3 million, how much are we going to pay that? And how mu-, how much do you, here's the question, maybe you can answer this. How many, how much are the taxes going to go up to satisfy this 3-plus-million-dollar loan? Anybody know?
Probably not at all, because we're paying off other loans until the payments are going down.
Probably, probably not at all. Here's what I really like to see. The county commissioners in this county have not raised taxes on these people because they have a heart, and they find ways to make it work. And again, I'm going to leave it with this. Mr. Burke, Ms. Bennett, I really gained a whole lot of respect for the two of you tonight. Thank you.
I do want to say something around the security, so as a board member, I don't feel safe coming into this auditorium with some of the threats that.
Your, your comment is over, and we're now allowed to give ours.
I just want, I just want to, I just want to make sure that folks are clear, so it's unfortunate that the Zoom is down because we only have the folks that are here. You know, I, I grew up in this area, I've lived in this community for a long time, and know, I, I grew up in this area, I've lived in this community for a long time, and I look over my shoulder now, and so, you know, just so folks are clear as to why there's additional security measures that weren't here before, because I, I can only speak for myself, but I don't feel safe coming into a place where I've had threats against me, and so, I would like to be able to serve the community and feel safe, and so, that's the reason why I back the additional security measures that have never been here before, but I can only speak for myself, so I just want to make sure that folks are clear on why that is, I think it's unfortunate that that's being done, no doubt, Toncanic's a great place to live, again, I've lived here 24 years or whatever it is now, good, more than half of my life, and so, that's the reason why that stuff's happening, so hopefully we won't need that in the future, but that's the current state of our, our community today.
Well, to be clear, it's not our community, there's a cup, there's a small faction in our community that's trying to bring negative attention from other parts that are not the Toncanic Area School District, and that is where that feeds from, but as long as that continues, we will continue to make sure that we are safe, and that you all who are here are safe being in this building for this meeting, so...
And I agree with Mr. Burke on that, that's, I've been here in this community over 60 years, and I totally agree with that, and a couple other things I'd like to bring up, I'd like to give, like a shout-out to the District 9 course, our students have participated at last week over at Mid Valley School, what a performance, it was just outstanding. Now, another thing I would like to bring out, so everybody knows, students in the junior class whose parents have Claverrack for their electrical supplier, they have approximately a month, they need to see the guidance counselor, because you can sign up, do a short video, and go to Washington for a week, and plus, there are scholarships available through Claverrack, and the last thing, on a sad note, in this last month, the retired TASD family, we lost four good people that I personally worked with when I worked here for 13 and a half years, Bob Daniels, Ed White, Fern Boyce, and Wendy Didier, and my heart goes out to all those families.
Thank you for bringing that up, Bill.
Yes.
And I apologize if I missed any, but that's the four that I know about.
I bet you there's several people up here who were taught how to drive by Mr. White, don't hold it against him, I mean, it's not his fault, but...
Thanks.
And one more thing I'd like to address, this gentleman, I'm also retired, I live on straight social security, some of this stuff, I don't agree with, you haven't seen it all, and you haven't been here at every meeting, I have voiced my opinion against some of this stuff, but some of it is drastically necessary, and with our other bonds working down, I don't believe there's going to be much difference, but I know what it is, I'm